Good afternoon, the council will come to order. Madam Clerk, please take a quorum roll call.
Good afternoon. The quorum roll call is now open. Please mark yourselves present. Okay, I'm now going to call on those who have not used their device yet. Alder Person Robinson. Alder Person Robinson is present. Alder Person Hall. Alderman Hall is present. Alder Woman Lee. Alder Woman Lee is present. Alder Woman Ramirez. Alder Woman Ramirez is present. Alderman Quinn. Alderman Quinn is present. Oops, sorry, you guys are all present now, thank you. Moving on, Alderman Coleman's not here. Alderman Curtis, Taylor. Alderman Mosley. Alderman Mosley is not present. And Tali Pharoah. Alderman Wagasback. Alderman Wagasback is not present. Alderman Ramirez Rosa. Alderman Ramirez Rosa is present. Alder Woman Mitz. Alder Woman Mitz is not present. Okay. Is everyone in chambers mark themselves? Alder Woman Silverstein. Alder Woman Silverstein is present, please mark her present. Okay. Okay. Thank you. Okay, quorum is now closed. Hit refresh.
There are 36 members present, we do have a quorum. Alders Hopkins, Yancey, Coleman, Curtis, Taylor, Tabarez, Tali Pharaoh, Rodriguez Sanchez, Lawson, Gardner, Sil-- I'm sorry, and Palatano have all requested to participate in today's meeting remotely for rules-- sorry, for reasons stated in Rule 59 of family emergencies, business in public body, as well as illness. Can I get a motion to approve their remote participation and have them added to the quorum? Thank you, it's been moved. And so, please, Madam Clerk, the allowance of Alders Hopkins, Yancey, Coleman, Curtis, Taylor, Tabarez, Tali Pharaoh, Rodriguez Sanchez, Lawson, Gardner, and Palatano, please allow them to participate remotely. And again, do I have to do this? All in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed say nay. In the opinion of the Chair, the ayes have it. So again, Madam Clerk, please mark the following Alders participating remotely as President on the quorum roll call. Let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for our invocation, which will be delivered by Reverend Ira J. Akri of the Greater Satan John Bible Church.
Eternal God, we come before your presence today seeking your guidance in this vital and pivotal council meeting. As we gather in these sacred chambers at this watershed moment, it's my prayer that your will would be done by those who have sworn to serve our great city. We pray that our city, that has had such a long history of segregation, will replace that with legislation that ends this ugly tale of two cities. We pray for equal pay for equal work. We pray for the end of first-class prisons and second-class schools. While others have advocates and lobbyists to fight for them, I stand as a voice for those at the bottom of the empire. We pray for the scales of justice to be balanced for every citizen of Chicago. Lord, we will not rest until justice rolls down like water and righteousness like a mighty stream. We pray for peace and tranquility, not only in the streets, but in these hallowed halls of this chamber. May peace prevail throughout our city, our country, and beyond. And as we prepare to enter the yuletide season, we think of Mother Mary, the Theo Tocos, the carrier of our Savior, being blocked from Bethlehem in. I'm compelled to think of our dear Mother, Alderman Mitz. Thank you, Lord, for her wisdom to take the high ground this week as a vessel of peace, saving us, our city, from further disgrace. In that same spirit of our dear Mother, Alderman Mitz, we pray, Lord, make us one. We pray for the security, serenity, and sanity of this august body and for our mayor. And we speak these words in the name of the God of love and justice, in the name of the God of sojourn of truth and Harriet Tubman, Ida B. Wells, Jane Addams, Fannie Lou Hamer, Betty Shabazz, and Coretta Scott King. We pray in the name of the God of Sarah, Rebecca, and Rachel, and in the name of that one who was born outside the inn, raised in Nazareth, baptized in the muddy Jordan, arrested by the Romans, crucified by the empire, yet he was raised by the power of God. We ask these blessings in his holy name. And all of the people of God say, amen? Amen? Amen.
And you may be seated. This is the portion of the meeting dedicated to public comments.
The council will now begin the public comment period, which is limited to a maximum of 30 minutes. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. Speakers cannot yield or transfer their time to another speaker. Any written comments that have been submitted will be posted and made available for Aldermanic review. The first speaker is Ms. Jacqueline Zuniga.
I will not be silenced from the third-floor balcony. I stand here representing all the underserved communities in Chicago. We have been unfairly treated, even in City Hall, as representatives for our communities. CTU has been taking priority seating over all of us. I've been here since 1:30. Yesterday, there was some sort of fiasco. Even though we were first in line, we were also put to the third floor. We were told that there wasn't any seating on the second floor. I saw the seating on the second floor. I have videos of the empty seats on the second floor. I would like to know why you think it's okay to try to build migration camps at 3800 South California, also 2800 West 38th Street, when that is zoned and reserved for manufacturing. That's not meant for any sort of residential building there. And when I called Digger, Digger said that they didn't get any calls or-- nobody contacted them in regards to digging up the street on 38th in front of said potential site. So, there was digging in the street and in the sidewalk. And when I called the City of Chicago for permits, they said, "The City of Chicago can do what they want. The Water Department can apply for the permits later." And when they said-- it said, "Water replacement," that's the only thing that I saw. But when I saw them digging up the street, I didn't see any existing lines for them to be replaced. So, I'm just wondering where replacement comes into play when that wasn't-- there were no established pipes down there in the first place. And the water was shut off to homes for 12 hours. I believe it was Tuesday, when the initial notices that went out were for a Monday. So, I think that Chicago needs to get rid of the leaves that are already in existence. We don't need to turn a new leaf, we need to rake all the old leaves out. Because you think that from where you stand, you're safe. You're comfortable. We're not safe, we're not comfortable, and we're going to be heard as residents of Chicago. We have lived here for generations. We've dealt with loads of different things you can't even imagine. So, we're tough, and we're resilient, and we stand strong on our beliefs, on our faith, on our relationships with other people in Chicago. We care about each other. I represent Brighton Park personally, that's where I reside.
Thank you, Ms. Zuniga, your time has expired. The next speaker is Ugo Okere.
Good afternoon, Members of City Council and Mayor Brandon Johnson.
Good afternoon.
My name is Ugo Okere, Policy Director for Raise the Floor Alliance. You may remember me, where I spoke on the issue before the Workforce Development Committee for the ordinance, paid time off, and I am a resident of the 25th Ward. Raise the Floor Alliance is an alliance of worker centers around the City of Chicago, County of Cook, and State of Illinois. We represent primarily Black and Brown workers in low-wage industries across our 50 wards, and today I am here in support of the paid time off ordinance. I've been a part of negotiations for months with the City of Chicago and the business community. We have moved significantly from our original proposal, particularly to address the needs of small businesses, including the ones in your wards, many of which are in support of our ordinance. Despite that, the defenders of big business and corporations remain opposed to this measure. Their reason is that it's too much too soon. I've heard that time and time again, that it is too much too soon, and I'm sick of hearing it. Alder people, I ask you, is it too much to give workers the ability to take time off to care for a sick family member? Is it too much to give a worker the ability to go to their daughter's ballet recital? Is it too much to give workers the ability to live a life worth living? Because for decades, business has gotten their way, their way to control the lives of workers, their way to force workers to miss the most valuable days of their lives. How much longer before those big businesses and those that listen to the Chicagoland Chamber of Commerce think the workers of Inglewood, Pilsen, South Shore, Roseland get their break? How much longer until it's no longer too much too soon? With this most recent election, workers have seen the mountaintop. They have seen what is possible. They have seen that we could have a city that doesn't just say it loves workers, but actually passes policies that shows that it loves its workers. City Council, you have an opportunity today to join workers on that mountaintop and bring Chicago forward to a city that works for all people and not just a handful of millionaires and billionaires. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Okere. The next speaker is Jackie Page.
I find myself here on the third floor in the area where the no-dueros are placed. Because we don't have a voice. We don't matter up here. You don't want to see us, you don't want to hear from us. So, you put us on the third floor because we don't matter. We don't count. Our opinions don't matter to you because this is the administration of organized crime. These hallowed halls up here is for the well-healed, for the well-connected, for those who are in power. And these-- this is an administration of the have and the have-nots. The people are the have-nots. The Chicago Teachers Union and their cronies are the haves. The Chicago Teachers Union have brought themselves a Mayor Oreo seat. The Chicago Teachers Union are probably sitting on that second floor right now. But you see, we, the people, will not be denied. We, the people, will exercise our rights, our First Amendment rights, and our rights to liberty and justice for all. We will not be suppressed. Voter suppression is going on on these halls. And not only that, but hate speech. We were taunted with hate speech, and it was done by an organized group. We say no to that kind of behavior. We say no to that kind of government. And we say no to those frenemies that come and smile in our faces, but then betray us and pretend like they are our friends. These politicians do not vote our interests. You, the citizens of Chicago, I am challenging you to do something different. If you don't like the way that you are being treated, do something different. We can't touch the aldermen, but we can touch the state reps. We can touch the state senators. We can touch the congressmen, and we can touch the senators. We don't like it, and we say, "It's time for us to do something different." And what is different? Have a two-party system. We right now have a one-party system, and that's why we are being disrespected. You may not feel comfortable with saying Republican, but that is what is needed right now. Because the Democrats have thumbed their noses up at you. And if you want to thumb your noses back at them, consider another choice. And I say, for those who are floating petitions, do not sign nominating petitions for betrayers. These betrayers who voted in for migrants over Americans, kick them out.
Thank you, Ms. Page. The next speaker is Blanca Martinez.
Buenas tardes a todos los presentes. Mi nombre es Blanca Martinez y soy miembro de Rise Chicago. Trabajo en un restaurante en el centro de esta ciudad y no tenemos días libres pagados. Como saben los otros papás que trabajan en restaurantes, las horas pueden ser difíciles. Como una mamá trabajadora, es difícil tener tiempo de calidad con mis hijas. Ellas tres están en la escuela durante la semana y yo trabajo todos los fines de semana. Ahora en la adolescencia necesito más tiempo individual con cada una para hablar de los cambios en la vida y todas sus actividades. Yo he perdido muchos días importantes con ellas porque no tengo tiempo. Siempre digo, lo siento, no tengo tiempo ahora, necesito trabajar. Con esta ordenanza, en lugar de decir, "No, no, no," por fin puedo tener la oportunidad de decir, "Sí." Con esta ordenanza puedo tener un poco más de tiempo con mis hijas. Y la verdad es que cinco días no es mucho. No es un día cada mes ni cada dos meses. Quiero que ustedes, nuestros representantes especialmente, los que tienen hijos, sobrinos, nietos, piénsalo, tener solo un día completo con ellos no es mucho, pero sí va a beneficiar a miles de familias como la mía. Es con la esperanza de tener más tiempo de calidad con mi familia que les pido sus votos en favor de la ordenanza de tiempo libre pagado. Gracias.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Vanessa Vasquez.
I'm repeating her comments in English. I'll be doing this with both speakers here. My name is Blanca Martinez, and I am a member of Rise Chicago. I work in a restaurant downtown, and we don't have paid days off. As other parents who work in restaurants know, the hours can be tough. As a working mom, it's hard to have quality time with my daughters. The three of them are at school during the week, and I work every weekend. Now that they are adolescents, I need more individual time with each one to talk about changes happening in their lives and all of their activities. I have lost many important days with my daughters because I don't have time. I'm always saying, "I'm sorry, I don't have time right now, I need to work." With this ordinance, instead of saying, "No, no, no," I can finally have the opportunity to say, "Yes." Yes to more time with my daughters. And the truth is that five days is not much. It's not one day every month, or even one day every two months. I want you, our elected representatives, especially those who have children, nephews, nieces, grandchildren, to think about that. Only one full day with your kids less than every two months. Think about it, it's not a lot of time, but it will benefit thousands of families like mine. It is in hopes of having more quality time with my family that I ask you for your votes in favor of the paid time ordinance today. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Vanessa Vasquez.
Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Vanessa Vasquez. Soy madre trabajadora y miembro de Rise Chicago. Estoy aquí para pedir su voto en favor de la ordenanza de tiempo libre pagado. Estoy aquí no solo por mi propia familia, sino representando a más de 1,300 miembros de Rise y todas las familias de clase trabajadora en Chicago. Todos nosotros necesitamos tiempo libre pagado. Yo sé que trabajar sin descanso, de trabajar en todos los festivos, como un 4 de julio, un Labor Day, un Thanksgiving, un Christmas, or a New Year, sin la oportunidad de pasar el día con mi familia. Pregunta a ustedes concejales, ¿quién aquí no tiene días libres pagados? ¿Quién tiene la misma experiencia de trabajar sin tiempo para estar con tus hijos? Ni en los festivos, ni en otros días especiales como sus cumpleaños. ¿Sabes cómo se siente ser un padre y no estar con tus hijos en esos días? Todos merecemos tiempo con nuestras familias y tiempo de descansar y recuperar nuestros cuerpos y bienestar, sin importancia de cuánto ganamos. Con esta ordenanza tenemos la oportunidad de manejar la calidad de nuestras familias, y por esta posibilidad de levantar las vidas de cientos de miles de familias de nuestra ciudad, les pido a favor votar sí por la ordenanza de tiempo libre pagado. Gracias.
My name is Vanessa Vasquez. I'm a working mother and a member of Rise Chicago. I am here to ask for your vote in favor of the paid time off ordinance. I'm here not only for my own family, but representing over 1,300 members of Rise and all working families in Chicago. All of us need paid time off. I know what it means to work tirelessly, to work all the holidays like the Fourth of July, Labor Day, Thanksgiving, Christmas, and New Years without the opportunity to be with my family. I ask you, our alderpeople, who here does not have paid days off? Who has the same experience of working without time to be with their families? Not on these holidays nor on the other special days like their birthdays. Do you know what it feels like to be a parent and not be with your children these days? We all deserve time with our families, time to rest and recover our bodies and well-being, no matter how much we earn. With this ordinance, we have the opportunity to improve the quality of life for our families, for the chance to lift the lives of hundreds of thousands of families in our city. I ask you to vote yes on the paid time off ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Sister Zakia Mohammed.
Dismillah, Rakmana Rahim. I would like to say good afternoon to the City Council members, the media over there, and to my brother, Mayor Brandon Johnson, who we fought on some fronts together. And all those fronts we fought on together when I was with SEIU or anything else out there in the street. Brother Brandon, you have always been on the right side of history. That's why I campaigned for you, and that's why I voted for you. That's why I encouraged others to vote for you. Because I knew and I felt in my heart you would be on the right side of history. And that meant including your people, descendants of enslaved Africans. Brother, you got to stop the buses from coming in. You just got to stop the buses coming in because it's hurting your people. I'm talking about descendants of enslaved Africans. We're hurting the things that our people have been on the waiting list come for. The immigrants are coming in, getting everything. And I don't have time to go into all of it, because I have another concern. When I used to come down here under Harold Washington, and we were fighting Ed Burke, Vidolia, and the rest of the haters of Black people that's setting these seats down here, we had two Latino aldermen. We had Louis Gutierrez and Jesus Garcia. They never pushed a Black woman around. They never voted against Black people's issues. They never hawk-helded meetings behind Mayor Washington's back to form committees. They never tried to take Black wards and Black precincts. I thought we were on our way to a Black and Brown coalition. But you know what? I thought I'd see it under you. But you know what? Carlos Ramirez, he spoiled all of that. And it was disrespectful to every Black man down there on that floor, including you, that he's comfortable enough to put his body in front of a Black woman, you understand, and tell her what she can't do. Because she know ain't no strong Black men down there that's gonna confront him. He know his people got his back. I wish it had have been me he pushed. But I'll just go on to say this. Something has got to be done. Because all Black women ain't satisfied with Emma Mitz's apology and the forgives. We ain't for it. But back to the buses, my brother, please. Coming from your elder, we've been talking, the elders been talking. We looking for you to help us on this issue. Stop the buses. Please stop those buses from coming in here. Will you please? Thank you. Peace.
Thank you, Sister Mohammed. Our next speaker is Chris Warden.
Good afternoon. I'm Chris Warden, and I work for Women Employed, working to build women's economic power through employment, education, and entrepreneurship. Women Employed is celebrating our 50th anniversary. And during that time, one of the most critical policies we've advocated for is paid leave, particularly for workers in low-paid occupations and part-time workers who work in jobs that often don't provide benefits beyond what is required by law. We know these workers are more likely to be women and more likely to be Black and Latina. Access to paid time off is critical to workers and their families who are struggling to make ends meet in a challenging economy. It gives workers time to spend with their families, to care for their health without risking their livelihood. Paid time off also affords workers the ability to stay home when they're sick, preventing their colleagues from getting sick and missing work. It's also important for women's participation in the labor force. An Illinois study showed that access to paid leave increased the probability that a working mother remained in the workforce, employed by 10%, and reduced her likelihood of experiencing a loss of income by 14%. Due to occupational segregation, women, and especially Black and Brown women, are concentrated in low-paid jobs, which are less likely to provide benefits beyond the minimum required by law. Women are also more likely to shoulder the burden of childcare and caretaking, often having to make the choice between their paycheck and the family. No one should risk losing their job or their paycheck because they're caring for themselves or their family. We need a paid time off law that guarantees that workers can be with their loved ones and earn a living, no exceptions, no matter where we work, and regardless of whether we are white, Black, or Brown. By expanding paid sick time and paid time off, this ordinance will help make sure workers are not put in a position of jeopardizing their or their family's well-being, health, or safety for a paycheck. Being able to take a day off should not be a privilege afforded only to people in high-paying, full-time jobs. The flexibility of paid time off paired with the security of paid leave means that this will be one of the most progressive and protective ordinances of its kind and will provide a more secure economic future for all. provide a more secure economic future for Chicago workers. The ordinance before you today is a common sense policy, and on behalf of Women Employed, I want to voice our strong support for the Chicago paid time ordinance, and ask you to vote yes on the ordinance as it is proposed today. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Mary Kay Devine.
My name is Mary Kay Devine, and I am the Chief of Staff at Women Employed. I'm a proud resident of Chicago for almost 30 years. I first moved to Rogers Park when I was 17 years old to go to Loyola University, and I am proud to say I am still a resident of the 49th Ward, where I live with my husband and my four children. I was a primary caregiver for my parents until they passed away recently, so not only am I professionally highly aware and in tune with these issues and needs of working women, working families, I am personally invested in today's ordinance. On behalf of Women Employed, echoing my colleague Christina Warden, we are voicing our strongest support for the Chicago paid time off ordinance. I have paid time off. I am able to go on field trips, and volleyball games, and concerts, and science fairs, and it is unimaginable that other mothers, and fathers, and guardians cannot even enjoy the fun times with their families at the risk of losing pay, and worse, losing their jobs. So this paid time ordinance is so powerful, because it covers caregivers for when people in our family are ill, ourselves, but also for fun. And just like the labor movement, and workers, and organizations like Women Employed, for years, hundreds of years, have talked about bread and roses, this is bread and roses. We need to have our basic fundamental rights and protections as working people, and all of us, no matter our race, ethnicity, ward, zip code, should have the opportunity to take time off to enjoy our families. On behalf of myself, the workers, our coalition partners, and my neighbors all across the city of Chicago, we strongly encourage you, we plead with you, we ask you, please, alderpeople of Chicago, vote for the Chicago paid time off ordinance as written, so that working women, working families, our children, our communities, and all of our neighborhoods can thrive. Thank you for allowing me to make public comment.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Nataki Rhodes.
Hey, good afternoon, Mayor Johnson and the City Council. My name is Nataki Rhodes, National League Organizer for One Fair Wage. I am standing here today as a national leader, and as a former worker, and a very, on behalf of One Fair Wage, a very strong supporter of paid time off. As a work, a former worker, I too know what Vanessa is talking about. I too had to struggle to raise my son, struggled to get daycare for him, struggled to get time off, coming from tipped wages. And I really struggled. And so I called the City Council to vote yes on this ordinance. This is a workers' movement. You pass One Fair Wage, stand up for workers, continue to stand up for workers, continue to stand and support your mayor, continue to stand and support workers from the communities. I'm from the 7th Ward. We need the aldermen to stand up, because guess what, Reverend Ackery? I am picking up the baton of Philip A. Randolph. I am fighting against the Illinois Restaurant Association. They are here in full task. They are here to fight against workers. I am fighting against the Lodging Association, the Chicago Chambers of Commerce. These people are lobbying, have money to lobby against low-wage, single mothers that are here trying to make a living and spend time. And you want to talk about youth violence? If Vanessa, if parents are not here to take care of their kids, then guess what? CPT is gonna continue to lock them up. There's gonna be more Laquan McDonald's, Paul O'Neill. The police kill youth. The police lock up our youth. And you say, "Where are the parents?" Well, we're at the Illinois Restaurant Association's jobs. We're at the Lodging Association's job. We're trying to take care of the city. We're trying to do this. But you want us to stay at home. We're trying to prevent youth violence. And I have prevented youth violence, and we want to prevent youth violence, but we need paid time off, and we need it now. And we need the aldermen from the 8th Ward, the 20th Ward, aldermen Bill, aldermen Nitz, stand up for workers today, right now. I challenge you to pay, to pass paid time sick off, paid time sick off for workers today, and do not let the Illinois Restaurant Association win today. Today is the day for workers. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Rhodes. Our final speaker is Ivy Hart.
Good evening. Can you guys hear me? Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council members, and city staff. I am Ivy Hart, mother, daughter, wife, unapologetically black, proud homeowner in the South Shore community. I'm here today with Women Employed to voice my strong support for the Chicago paid time off ordinance. Five months ago, I had a baby that was sent to the NICU. I needed paid time off. When my mom fell and I needed to take care of her, I needed paid time off. When my friend passed suddenly, bless his heart, Brett Hamlet, I needed paid time off. And this is not just about me and my experiences. In life, we can never predict what is going to come up, nor can we control it. We all deserve to have paid time off. Even the people in the business community that oppose this bill, they are not exempt from family needing their help, or time needed to grieve or heal. So they may not know it, but they too deserve paid time off. I want you to close your eyes for a second, and think about someone you care deeply, needing your help, and there's no one else to help them but you, and they reach out to you desperately during your workday, but you weren't able to go. Whether that's your kid, parent, best friend, or even your dog, I know y'all care about your dogs too, that ain't right. So as a city, we must stand together and ensure that no one has to risk their ability to pay their bills, feed their families, or lose their job in order to tend to the other responsibilities that we have in this life. We plead vote yes to paid leave ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Your Honor, there are no further speakers who have timely signed up for the public comment period.
Thank you very much. This concludes our public comments. For the resolutions, we don't have any. For communications, we don't have any communications. There are no committee reports either. For the agreed-upon calendar, the Chair recognizes Alderman Harris.
Mr. President, we have no agreed-upon calendar matters. Thank you.
Very well. All right, next up, new business.
Traffic regulations, traffic control signals, and traffic signs, referred to the Committee on Pedestrian and Traffic Safety. Exemptions from physical barrier requirement for commercial driveway alley access to parking facilities, referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alderman Riley and others have an ordinance to amend the Municipal Code Section 6-130-100 regarding procedures for covered employees to give notice for violations of benefits, referred to the Committee on Workforce Development. Alderman Irvin and others have an ordinance to amend Municipal Code Chapter 6-130 regarding information requirements, referred to the Committee on Workforce Development. Alderman Moore has an ordinance for an honorary street designation as Munir Mohammed Way, referred to the Committee on Transportation. Alderman Lopez and others has an ordinance to establish a policy prohibiting property owned by city and used as shelter for migrants to continue such use beyond 12 months, referred to the Committee on Budget. Your Honor, that concludes the presentation of Aldermanic introduction.
Thank you very much. For new business. Chair recognizes Alderman Irvin.
Thank you, Mr. President. I know we're here today to deal with an item from paid time off, however, I know that we've got some, one issue that I think we all have been in conversation about, Alderman of the 42nd Ward, now both have introduced ordinances to that effect, dealing with the point about the private action. So with that, both of these items will be in Workforce Committee. I want to thank Alderman Rodriguez for his help in working through some of these challenges we've got time to implement and work through this, as this private action issue does not impact us if the legislation passes until January of 2025. So appreciate the conversation and around this issue, but I'll definitely look forward to passage of the item today, plus the work that we're going to do in Alderman Rodriguez's Committee on Workforce to finalize this one issue. Thank you, Ms. President.
Thank you, Alderman Irvin. Thank you for your all's commitment to collaboration. For the approval of the Journal, I understand that there are no journals to be approved either. For unfinished business, the Chair recognizes Alderman Mitchell.
Mr. President, I'm aware of one item of unfinished business. It was filed by Alderman Rodriguez and calls for a vote on SO 2023-0002980, which was deferred and published on November 7, 2023.
Thank you very much. The Chair recognizes Alderman Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just to summarize briefly, in committee on November 2, we accepted a substitute ordinance that was SO 2023-0002980. The substitute ordinance passed out of committee by a 13 to 2 vote of the members present, actually, all were present, thank you very much for that. The item was deferred and published on November 7. Pursuant to my Rule 41 notice, I hereby move for a roll call vote on the Chicago paid leave and paid sick leave and safe leave ordinance, SO 2023-0002980. Mr. Chairperson, I'm sure folks want to speak to this, I request leave to be the first speaker on the matter.
Leave is granted. Permission to continue to speak. Yes, the Chair recognizes Alderman Riley.
Thank you, Mr. President. Pursuant to Rule 33 of the City Council Rules of Order, I'd like to move to accept a substitute ordinance for SO 2023-002980 that was circulated by the Sergeant Arms and electronically. The substitute simply provides a 30-day cure period to employers to cure alleged violations under this ordinance before an employee may commence private cause of action, in order to allow good operators to make their employees whole in an amicable, efficient, and timely manner, as opposed to both the employer and employee going through the time, effort, and cost of a lawsuit. And it also simply clarifies that the language regarding the availability of the private cause of action for paid leave beginning January 1, 2025, applies to violations occurring on or after January 1, 2025. This amendment would do nothing else to all the provisions that were successfully negotiated by Chairman Rodriguez and supporters of the ordinance, but in the last 48 hours, I've received a number of frantic phone calls from various members of the business community who have essentially waved the white flag and accepted that this ordinance will pass. They're asking for this one small provision so that this ordinance does not become a jackpot for litigation. I think allowing employers the 30 days to make right with their employee, any pay that may be owed to them, is reasonable. It's, according to the business community, still considered to be burdensome, but they say that they can make that work, and they do appreciate that there's been discussion around this time to cure, but seven days, they say, is simply not nearly enough time, especially for smaller and midsize employers. So this ordinance will still be by far the most progressive in the nation, and a huge victory for organized labor. I'm simply asking, on behalf of the business community, for us to take this one little step to make this a bit easier for them to absorb, while providing all of these great protections and benefits for Chicago workers.
Thank you very much, Alderman. There's a motion on the floor to accept an amendment. Chair recognizes Alderman Irvin.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think that the point that the Alderman from the 42nd Ward makes is a point that is ripe for discussion, however, I think the point of discussion, which I think has been relayed by both ordinances that have been submitted, one calling for one amount of days, one called for another amount of days, as an item for committee. I think that everything else is intact, and I will respectfully ask that we table that as we're going to go to committee for that discussion in the Workforce Committee.
All right. There's a motion, so there's a motion to table the initial motion to accept the substitute for this ordinance. This requires an e-vote, I understand. So as we set up, there's a motion to lay Alderman Riley's motion on the table. If you vote yes, you wish to return back to the initial motion to pass the ordinance as is. If you vote no, you wish to move forward with Alderman Riley's motion to accept the substitute immediately. Madam Clerk.
Please hit refresh and cast your vote. Alderman Hopkins.
Alderman Hopkins is a no.
Alderman Hopkins is a no. Alderman Yancy.
Yes.
Is that a yes, Alderman Yancy?
I'm a yes. Can you tell? I'm a yes.
Alderman Yancy, can you please state if you are a yes or a no? I'll move on. Alderwoman Coleman.
Yes.
Alderwoman Coleman is a yes. Alderman Curtis.
Yes.
Alderman Curtis is a yes. Alderwoman Taylor.
Yes.
Alderman, yes.
Alderwoman Taylor is a yes. Alderwoman Tabarez.
No.
Alderwoman Tabarez is a no. Alderman Talia Farrow.
Yes.
Alderman Talia Farrow is a yes. Alderperson Rodriguez Sanchez.
Yes.
Alderperson Rodriguez Sanchez is a yes. Alderman Napolitano.
Yes.
Alderman Napolitano is a yes. Alderman Lawson.
No.
Alderman Lawson is a no. Alderman Gardner.
No.
Alderman Gardner is a no. Alderman Yancy.
Yes.
Yes, I can hear you. I can hear you. Okay, voting is now closed. Okay, voting is now closed.
There are 35 yays and 12 nays. The motion to lay the substitute motion on the table has passed. The Chair recognizes Alderman Rodriguez.
This is Alderman Yancy. I'm trying to record a yes vote.
Yeah, we got you. Chair recognizes Alderman Rodriguez.
Sorry, y'all.
It's all good.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And, look, I want to get to the Bears game, so, but I also think that this issue, no, I'm not going to it, I just want to watch.
Please direct your comments to me. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, this matter is a very important matter to the residents of the city of Chicago. I want to thank a number of my colleagues, I'm not going to name any names, but there are some folks who really stepped up to make this work well, and I think in the spirit of collaboration here in our council, I'm very proud of how we move forward. But before we get to the vote, I'd like to say the following. My working-class roots, they run deep. My father was a third-shift Teamster truck driver for the Chicago Sun-Times. My mother, a federal union employee with the Social Security Administration, God rest her soul. Thanks to my mom's union job that allowed her to take several days off each July, I have one of the fondest childhood memories, our annual trip downtown. We would walk from the Taste of Chicago to the boat ride with the recorded voice describing the reversal of the Chicago River, how the Sears Tower was the world's tallest building, and how the Oil Standard Building was the largest marble structure in the world. If you don't know, now you know. I remember sitting on the grass with my older brother and sister and amazing mother who is no longer with us, enjoying a fresh breeze and a warm sun on my face during a beautiful Chicago summer day while eating a chocolate and vanilla ice cream swirl at the small food shop off of the lake on John Baptiste Point de Sabo Lakeshore Drive. And this childhood memory was brought to you by paid time off. This policy not only helps workers, it helps businesses. Study after study shows paid leave increases worker productivity and worker retention. If COVID taught us anything, it's that workers need days off. This can be a life or death issue. This is a gender and racial justice issue affecting a workforce that is disproportionately women and people of color who are more likely to work in low-paid and part-time jobs without benefits. Just to be clear, to be very clear, we've worked closely with members of the business community on negotiating this proposal. We don't always agree, and that's okay, but we've compromised. We went from 15 paid days off that could be used for any reason and could not be denied to five days of paid time off that require preapproval by the employer. We went from no limit on those days that an employer can roll over to two days. We went from requiring all businesses to pay out to exempting businesses 50 or less and a two-year phase-in for businesses 51 to 100. We listened, we compromised. We went from fines of $2,500 for each separate offense to a range to allow for flexibility. We went from allowing workers to file a case in court through a private right of action on the effective date of the ordinance to a one-year delay so folks can figure out how to get this right. We included a study that will be presented to the Joint Committee on Economic Development and my committee workforce that will look at the impact of the small employer payout. I'm committed to also look at the worker and business impacts of this law. We intentionally put this language into monitor policy. Lastly, I want to thank Chairman Irvin for coming to me and working on some sort of compromise on this last piece on the cure. We're going to work on that together. These compromises have led to over a dozen individual businesses and business associations representing hundreds of workers supporting this compromise, and, you know, it's fair. A lot of businesses are against this, but that's the way this goes. But this, my friends, is also supported by 100 clergy members, and let us remember what this is about. This is about the workers in our great city and every labor group, every workers' rights group, 100% is in support of this effort. Colleagues, Chicago is the home to the eight-hour workday. We are the city of big shoulders that for the last two centuries has been the example of worker policies that have been duplicated across the country. Join me today in again making history. Let's yet again set the example for our nation and for every little boy and girl and their memories that they shape their hopes and their dreams. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Alderman Mitchell. Did we get that? Okay. The Chair recognizes Alderman Beal. My apologies. My apologies.
I'm a little taller than Mitchell.
Good evening.
Mr. President, colleagues. I rise not to support this ordinance, however, I do support workers. Now, how do you equate the two? Well, you equate the two by both parties coming to the table and working an issue out with nobody leaving happy. That's usually a pretty good ordinance, but what you have today is business saying, y'all got the votes, let's minimize the damage, and let's, as my colleague stated, wave the white flag. Now, one thing I hope everybody hears, but during the process, we had hearings. I asked the Commissioner of the Department that have we done a thorough investigation and scrub on this ordinance on how it's going to affect businesses here in the city of Chicago, either pro or con?
Yes.
And the answer from the Commissioner is no.
That's the problem.
When the Commissioner of a department tells, that's supposed to oversee this program or this ordinance and enforce it, says that we have not done our thorough research, that's a problem. When you ask the businesses how this is going to affect their business, and they tell you without question, they, 1.3 billion a year, that's what it's going to cost the city of Chicago when this ordinance is in effect. We asked the other side, how much is it going to cost? They had no answers. That's the only problem that I'm having with some of the stuff that's being rammed through this city right now. When you look at the tip wage, no thorough research, no thorough scrub of how it's going to affect business. Now we got this ordinance, no thorough scrub on how it's going to affect. Next, we got bring home Chicago. The next ordinance is going to be stay home Chicago because there won't be any jobs for people to be going to.
That's hard.
So we have to understand what we're doing here. We have to protect workers, yes, but we also got to look to protect the business who hire the workers. And if we don't do that, there's going to be nothing left. Now, I'm going to give you all the 800-pound gorilla that's in the room. That 800-pound gorilla is called property taxes, because what's going to happen next year when the assessments come through, because we have a 40% vacancy rate downtown and every high-rise downtown is going in for reduction on their taxes, that assessment's going to be spread out through the entire city of Chicago.
That's right.
Because of the vacancy rate. So people are going to feel the grunt of this one way or another. And so when you have taxes going to be going up, reassessments going to be going up, art money running out, y'all, we are headed toward a collision course in this city. And if we don't start looking to protect the people in this city from beginning to end, because there is a balance, there is a balance, but constantly pounding business over the head when businesses are still struggling, coming out of COVID, to rebound and get back to where they can at least make 3%, because the profit margin on most of these businesses, restaurants, is 3%, 4%. This ordinance is going to take it down to about 2%. One of our colleagues, Alderman Tunny, has said he's thinking about closing some of his stores. Because why? Because we constantly, constantly are doing the wrong thing in this body. It is not this body's responsibility to constantly do the bidding of special interests.
Thank you!
And that's what we're doing. We're constantly carrying special interest water here in this body. The bleeding is going to stop, and do you know why the bleeding's going to stop? Because there's going to be no more blood in the body to produce. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I hope you all vote no.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Alderman Spazado.
Thank you, Mr. President. I didn't have my hand up, but I guess so.
Oh, I'm sorry. You don't have to speak.
That's right. I planned on speaking. I just, I'd like to wait a little, but I'll speak. That's right.
You can take, Laspada is ready if you need another minute.
Okay, I'll speak after him then.
Okay, thank you. The Chair recognizes Alderman Laspada.
I had a feeling that might be what had happened. Thank you, Chair. I'm proud to stand in support of this resolution. I'm glad for everybody who talked to me about it. I'm glad for the restaurants and the businesses who voiced their concerns. I'm glad for the workers who voiced their concerns, because I, Ivy Hart up in the gallery, Ivy, if you're still there, there she is, she's waving. She has us to close our eyes and picture two people who are impacted by this work or would be impacted by this work. And I thought of two people. I thought about my dad, who passed away in 2017, and Mike, it was, if I may, it was kind of the opposite of your experience, because from the time I was in middle school on, he couldn't go to any of our marching band competitions, he couldn't go to any of our concerts, he couldn't go to any of the plays that my brothers and I are in, because he worked as a night security guard, and because he was hourly and because he didn't have a union, he had no paid time off. It was eight years of my dad not going to go, get to go to anything, and that was really frustrating. And now that he's not here, I'm sad for all the memories that we didn't get to make with him. And I think about, the second person I think about is my daughter Lucia, who just passed 14 months, and I want something so different for her, you know? I'm glad that I'm afforded the immense privilege of this job that when she had her first doctor's appointment, I was able to take time off to go to that with my wife. I was really glad to have time off to go for a birthday celebration with her. I think about all the things that I don't want to miss along the way, and I think about the selfish privilege, honestly, that a lot of us as men can carry, where we just put the domestic responsibility on our wives and partners. And we say, it's okay for me to focus on my work because they're there to take their paid time off. That's what they're supposed to do. And I'm not going to live into that kind of selfishness personally or professionally. So I'm glad that we have a chance to take this vote today, and I'm also glad for the work that Alderman Irvin is doing on right to cure, because I feel like we demonstrated that a couple days ago in this council. If we really believe in restorative and reconciliatory action before punitive action, as we demonstrated, I feel like we owe the same to the businesses that were passing legislation around. So I'm glad for the vote that we're going to take today, and I'm glad to be coming back to vote in the future on the amended language that Alderman Irvin has put forward. Thank you, Chair. Mr. President.
Thank you. Are there... Chair recognizes Alderman Spazado.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to also say that I support working men, women in business in this city, but that's why I oppose this. Somebody said, today is the day for the working man or working person? Well, today is the day for the loss of business and jobs and just another nail in the coffin for loss of investment in the city, is what I feel. To me, this seemed like it was rushed. Some people say it was, some say it wasn't. I have my own personal feeling. I know what I'm saying means nothing. I originally thought this would be a 49 to 1 vote, and I was prepared to be the one person. Maybe 40 to 10 now, but I'm still going to have my say. So just want to let everybody know, a lot of these businesses are everyday people just like us, struggling every day to survive, figuring out how they could get along. Some of these business owners actually have employees that make more than them, certainly if you go by hour, they certainly would make more than them. I heard that it's disproportionately going to affect women of color. Well, I don't disagree with that. I don't know where the facts come from, but I'm not going to disagree with that. But I do, I do want to tell you all that I believe it's going to disproportionately affect businesses of color, the businesses certainly, and certainly the border wards. We are going to get hammered. This is going to be difficult for us. It's going to be difficult to get people to come to the city, as there already is. So we all know the life expectancies of businesses, they're not very long. So I did hear from people, of course, I did hear from a lot of my labor friends, and I'm sure they're going to be pissed at me, but I'm sure they'll get over it and they'll forgive me, so I hope you all forgive me. But I did hear from, I did hear from businesses more that were opposed to it, and certainly I heard from chambers. I heard from a nice young lady from the Little Village Chamber that called me. I don't know her. She could be standing in front of me. I wouldn't know her, called me as a stranger, just asked me not to support this. So I didn't call her out by name, but I guess I ratted her out, so. But with that, I think in good faith, I can't support this. I think it's going to be destructive to this city, to jobs, businesses, going to make things more difficult. Obviously, I support vacations for people. I'm glad there's a cure. I think it's still a little too short, need a little bit more time, but I'm glad to have my say, Mr. President. Thought this might be a long meeting. I know everybody's in a hurry because you got all the important, the seat of Bears game, but to me, this is much more important. I don't care if we're here till midnight. I know it's not going to happen, but I just wanted to voice my opposition. I cannot, in good faith, cannot support this because I think it hurts working men and women and the businesses in the city of Chicago. But thank you so much, Mr. President. I appreciate your, my time.
Thank you. I have Alders, Mitchell, and Riley next. Is that accurate? All right, so it's Alderman Riley.
Thank you, Mr. President. Now, twice in one week, I'll be agreeing with Alderman Beal, which is notable. But I just wanted to kind of reinforce a few of the points that my colleagues have made about this. I'm also pro-worker and wouldn't be serving on this council but for the help from organized labor and the Chicago Federation of Labor when I ran against a 37-year incumbent. But that said, Alderman Beal's correct. The business community can only absorb so much at once, and I understand that there is a lot of enthusiasm among members, some members, for your agenda, Mr. President, and I respect that. But we're really piling on the business community right now, and certainly I want folks to get paid time off as well, and I think the business community has resigned to that fact, and they're going to try and find a way to make it work. But it's true, this is going to be an extra $1.3 billion in cost layered upon our employers next year, or, sorry, when this goes into full effect, and there will be consequences for that. And unfortunately, especially in the... And unfortunately, especially in the, the border wards that share borders with suburbs, we're gonna see a real pronounced impact there. I've heard from three of the biggest restaurant groups, all original to Chicago, founded here, telling me that with the layers of new regulations and requirements for the industry, they're not planning on opening a single new restaurant here. And instead, they're going to be focusing their investment, their economic development, their job creation in markets like Nashville, and Phoenix, and Miami, and Naples, rather than opening stores that employ thousands of workers here. These groups collectively employ over 30,000 people, and they're not gonna expand now. And that is not a good sign for our vacancy rates and adding jobs. Job growth is critical here. And Alderman Beal's also correct about the tax base. If we head down that, that spiral, we're not far off from being Detroit. And again, I think some reasonable changes to this ordinance, especially the cure period, is critical. This should not become a jackpot for trial lawyers. This should be about really, truly improving the lives of workers and finding a way for the employers to comply with this law, and give them a chance, if they do make an honest mistake, to make it right with the employee, rather than having to go and spend tens of thousands of dollars hiring lawyers to deal with litigation. And so I admire the, the work of the chief sponsor and chairman of the committee. I think that it's a noble goal. But I, again, I just want to let everyone know in this chamber that well-intended ordinances can sometimes have really... And I think even with a 30-day cure period, this will still be the most progressive law in the country among municipalities. We need to give these businesses a chance to survive, because if they don't expand, that means fewer job opportunities for future generations. And once you lose a major employer, a major restaurant group, when they decide that other states are better in climate for them to do business, they're gone for good. They don't come back. And so, again, this is not about taking on the Carnegie's and Rockefeller's and all the other robber barons. A lot of the folks who'll be feeling the impact of this ordinance are mom and pops, smaller and mid-sized employers, not mega multinational corporations. So the class warfare thing here, I think, should be more nuanced. It's not really what this is. Small business owners struggle just like everybody else, and they pay everybody else first, before they pay themselves. So I just hope folks keep this in mind as we do engage in debate over Alderman Irvin's version of, of the cure period, or mine, or some blend between the two. So unfortunately, because we can't do a floor amendment today to deal with the cure period, I have to vote no on this ordinance as well. But that said, I think everyone in this chamber genuinely wants to improve the lives of, of working families. I think that's a fact. It's just a matter of how we get there, and how much pain this business community can endure with regulation upon regulation upon regulation being layered upon them in very short order. So I know people have places to be. Thank you for your indulgence, Mr. President, but I hope people will keep all of this in mind as they're considering how they vote on the ordinance today and how we proceed with an amendment in the future. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. I have nowhere else to be. The chair recognizes Alder Vasquez.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I want to thank our colleagues, Alderman Irving and Alderman Riley. I think everyone here has an interest in getting this right. There may be disagreement in what that looks like, but I think everyone's doing it in good faith, and so I'm glad that there will be a conversation and workforce development to kind of talk through it, you know? In the 40th Ward, we were getting businesses reaching out. We had some of the business associations reaching out. We had labor reaching out. What we didn't have reach out are actual workers, because they don't really get a chance to take the time off to actually find out what's going on, to call us. They're busy working and trying to figure out what time they have to spend with their families, right? We have mom and pop shops that we have to consider. We also have moms and pops we have to consider, who don't have the time to actually be with their families. You know, we've had plenty of council meetings here where our colleagues will say, you know, this public safety issue and this violence, where are the parents? I never see the parents. Where are the parents at? They should be doing parenting. You know where a lot of them are? They're at work, unable to take a day off to actually be with their families. So this isn't just about business climate, it's also about public safety. It's about giving people the same rights that many folks in, in unions afford workers that people fight for. You know, for me, it's, it's, it's hard. My parents, growing up, my mom was an envelope factory worker, not a union worker. My dad was a shoe repair guy, not a union worker. And as I'm watching folks out here, I want to shout you all out, I hope, I apologize. There's a young boy right here who is falling asleep while we're watching this go on. We got parents who are bringing their kids over here as they're trying to get change to happen, and there's plenty of kids out there that aren't able to, to see what's going on, but what we do right now can serve to benefit them, the future, and this city. Now, is there work to be done? Absolutely. Are we gonna continue to work on these living documents and make amendments to get it right? Absolutely. Was there compromise? Absolutely. Right? We talk about the poor mom and pop shops. If you got 50 employees or less, you are exempted from payout. If you got 51 to 100, you'll have a year for implementation. For, for businesses that are larger than that, it's about buying in software and upgrading software to figure out how to do it right. Companies have done this plenty of times before, right? I, I've worked in retail my whole life. A lot of this was figured out through software and can be figured out, and we want to make sure to get it right. When people bring up the private right to action, for example, as a worker, let's say you feel like you got jerked and you weren't able to get paid time off, right? You're gonna run to a lawyer first, or you're gonna talk to the employer and say, "Hey, I don't think I was done right." That is an automatic opportunity to cure, right? It's not like these workers all of a sudden are like, "Let me go reach out this lawyer to just sue the employer." It's not the way it works out. I had talked to the Restaurant Association and others, and I said, "You know what? If you have a case to make, I'd love to hear it. Please show me the data of all the workers that you've seen that go straight to the lawyer and don't solve it." If everyone's got an issue about paid time off, what percentage of those workers go immediately to a lawyer? What do those lawsuits look like? Show me the data on that. Still waiting on that information." So I think we have plenty of time to get this right. I think we need to do what's right for the workers out here and for the people of our city, because as much as we want to say that we're for small business and we want to look out for small business, we should also be looking out for the workers whose labor creates this success that those businesses are happy to, to be granted, right? It's not about a job creation. It's about the fact there's a market demand and labor that meets that demand. And when those things work together, you end up with success. So it's not about the boss, it's not about the labor, it's about all of us working together to figure it out, and that's what I saw as all this was being negotiated. So I want to thank Alderman Rodriguez for all of his work. It was tough work. We were watching it all here at, at council. I want to thank Alderman Irving, as well as Alderman Riley, because we are trying to get it all right, and I think in the spirit of compromise and negotiation, we will. We have to do this. We are a city of workers. We want to make sure everybody in Chicago gets the same benefits we do, and anything that doesn't do that falls short of the mission. So I thank you all for being here. I know everyone wants to get off and go watch the Bears game, some people are working right now and aren't gonna be able to anyway, and we need to keep that in mind also. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Alderman... Chair recognizes Alderman Viejas.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. PTO, paid time off, very important, investing in the mental wellness of workers. Small businesses are the backbone of this country. Close to 100,000 small businesses that have licenses in the city of Chicago, 80% of them are small businesses. So I wanted to make sure that as we were walking, working through the compromise, that we were taking a look at those businesses from zero to, 1 to 50, because of the fact that some of these businesses don't have the luxury of having a comptroller, a finance department, accounting section. A lot of times, that CEO is the accounting person, finance person. So I think it was important to have those folks exempt as relates to the accrual. Office of Labor Standards will present to a joint committee on workforce development and the economic capital technology development to take a look at the workers' impact, but I thought it was important, I spoke to Chairman Rodriguez about making sure that we had the business impact as well. We want to make sure that the businesses within the city of Chicago are thriving, and that they understand that we're on their side. In the last six months, we've introduced legislation that helps workers, which we agree on. We also need to take a look at making sure that we're helping businesses as well. The city of Chicago does not, the city government of Chicago does not manufacture or sell widgets. We need to make sure that as we're introducing legislation, that we're taking into consideration those companies that ultimately employ people, and making easier for them to do business in the city of Chicago. I remember talking to a bureaucrat under previous administration that said, "Well, people want to, businesses want to do business in Chicago because we're the third-largest city." And I said, "Until we're not." So we can do both, making sure that we're taking care of the workers, but we also need to make sure that we're taking care of businesses. Again, they're the backbone of this country. BACP and OLS are going to introduce and promulgate some rules around this, and we got a commitment from both the commissioner of BACP and the OLS director that the promulgation of the rules will be done in a manner that's very transparent, because the promulgation of rules is very important, making sure that the intent of the legislation is carried out, but also we have an opportunity to take into consideration the policies that positively impact both workers and business. I am also looking forward to the debate in the workforce development around the cure And I want to thank all those chambers that reached out, and also the working groups and the unions that were, that talked about this cure period. I know there's a little bit, a little bit of a debate on that, but as one of my colleagues mentioned earlier, when both parties leave the table upset, that means that there's a pretty good, pretty good deal. So I think that there is some room for compromise, and I'm looking forward to supporting this ordinance today, but then also talking, having the debate in the workforce development to either support my colleague from the 28th Ward or 42nd Ward's version around cure, to make sure that, again, we're sending the signal that Chicago's open for business. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. The chair recognizes Alder Rodriguez Sanchez.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to thank all of the grassroots and labor organizations, Raise the Floor, Latino Union, Chicago Federation of Labor, Arrest Chicago, Women Employed, and everyone who worked so hard to get to a compromise on this ordinance. I also want to thank Chairs Rodriguez, Ramirez Rosa, thank you, Mayor, and, and everyone else that helped get us to this point. I want to speak in support of this ordinance and encourage my colleagues to vote for it, because it's urgent and Chicago's workers deserve so much better. First, I'm going to say that I have some businesses in my ward that were worried about this ordinance. One of them is owned by wonderful people who I know treat their workers with the utmost respect, and they have their own paid time off policies in place. And I'm so proud to have businesses like those in my ward, and I wish that was the case across the board, that this didn't need to be regulated. But the sad reality is that that is not the case. CBS News reported earlier this year that nearly 24,000 workers in Illinois filed claims for wage theft between January 2017 and October 2022. The total amount in claims was 194 million. And this is the people that actually filed claims, because we know that most workers probably are not going to file those, those claims. The people most impacted, as usual, are black and brown women, and the amount at the national level is $50 billion in wage theft, in claims. So many workers can't take care of basic things in life, celebrate important moments with their families, take care of themselves or their families because of lack of paid time off. In this context, it's very important that we do everything that we can as policymakers to guarantee the rights of workers to a dignified life, where they can take much-needed time to tend to their lives outside of work. In Chicago, we have been moving the agenda for improving workers' people's lives forward, but we know, in general, in this country, we are running behind. This agreement was reached in negotiations with the business community for months, and it's a compromise from the original 15 days. I truly believe this will provide a better quality of life for workers, which in turn will make their work more sustainable and make for a healthier society. Again, I want to thank everyone who worked to getting us to this place, and I hope my colleagues will support this ordinance so we get it through the finish line today. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Alder Woman Lee.
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, not all that long ago, I talked about the businesses in Chinatown, the small businesses and restaurants that are the lifeblood and backbone of my ward and not unlike the rest of the city. So this was yet another piece of legislation that took a lot of thought and, and conversation. I'm also a single mom, two boys, I have aging parents, I'm a cancer survivor. I've had the ability to take time off from my job, any job that I've had, actually, in my professional career, to be able to do that in some varying form. And after what we all experienced in COVID, and what we know, as, I know as a manager, I don't want my workers to come in sick, because they'll take everybody out, and then there'll be no services in the ward. But that's the same thing that we need to be able to have in all of our businesses. And to be sure, there's going to be an impact and a change period in all of this. You know, I, I want to acknowledge that I'm really happy that there was compromise that was made, in particular for small businesses with less than 50 employees. That will help tremendously. And I appreciate being a part of this conversation around the cure period as well. And I think, given the fact that we've got a year, we've got time to do right by businesses in that way. Change has to come, and that's where we are. And I'm gonna argue for a moment that this change has been a long time coming, and that's gonna be hard for people, because we just didn't have it before. It is a bold piece of legislation that we're voting on today, and we have to, I think we have to take a second to acknowledge that. You know, if we were, I also have businesses that already take care of their employees. They have their own paid time off, but it's not everybody, and this is something that folks should have. And we want the businesses to still be around to provide these jobs. And I think we, as a council, have to work hard to make sure that we're doing everything that we can to make sure that this transition is something that they can handle and provide the right tools. And then I think we also have to work as a council to make sure we're supporting small businesses in other ways. We can do that. That's our job. And if there's something that we need to discuss further about providing more tools for folks, we've got time to do that. So with that, Mr. President, I will be voting yes today. Thank you.
Thank you. The chair recognizes... Chair recognizes Alderman Irvin.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to thank my colleague from the 22nd Ward to be able to work through some of the challenges and differences that existed. Also want to thank, I mean, colleagues of the Chicago Automatic Black Caucus, too, for expressing some concerns around the issues of small businesses. Today, while, as they said, the legislation is not where we started, however, I think it's something that most can live with. One thing that I want to, do want to talk about is how we must work to address the issues of poverty in this city. Believe it or not, I think Alderman Vasquez talked about this, about people's ability to have some time for relief, but also have some time to deal with the other things that are happening, not only in their lives, but their children's lives. If you look at some of the root challenges that we face in the absences of adult or role model figures, he's right. Folks are at work. You come back, you see what's happening at home. I had a friend of, people work from, they worked afternoon shift, so that was a party house. They worked that, that 3 to 11 shift. You knew you had to be out by the end, but you could go to after-school and hang out. But again, I, I think... But again, I think that people having a good time to reflect and we have the sick time, now the paid time off, again, we have to tackle these concerns around the issue of poverty in this city because, as I said, a rising tide should lift all boats. And I won't use my osay phrase today, I'll save that one for Wednesday, but nonetheless, I think this is a piece of legislation that will help, help our communities, help those that are in poverty. If you look at the lowest quartile of this city, 85% of those people look like me. They look like me. And so we have a job and an obligation to help those who are in a position that will require them to be able to do more with their families, do other things. It's 100% of what anybody likes. I don't think that's the case. And I'm glad Alderman Riley and I both introduced legislation to help do a little more with this. But again, we have to think about not only those on the Gold Coast, but we got to think about those that are on the Soul Coast. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Alderwoman Dow.
Thank you, Mr. President. As you know, this past Sunday, while visiting four churches in my ward, I saw the enthusiasm of the congregations when PTO was mentioned. That resonated with me because I know that every worker needs to take a little time off to refresh and regroup without the fear of losing income. I had, however, to weigh this enthusiasm against the concerns of many small businesses and micro businesses and independent businesses that have reached out to me with concerns of what they view as an extremely complicated and potentially expensive paid leave policy. I've heard from restaurants, professional offices, cleaners, a daycare owner, and chambers of commerce in my ward. Many believe that the legislation we seek to pass today, along with the new minimum wage requirement, the ending of the tip credit, will prove to be crippling to their businesses, especially as most have barely recovered from the pandemic and continue to face rising costs associated with inflation, increased rent, labor shortages, cost of goods, repayment of loans that people have taken out during the pandemic, and increasing insurance rates. These are businesses that already have a low margin. While I want to work to ensure that employees get the time off that they deserve, the time off issue is nonexistent if we enact policies that force these businesses to close. I want to acknowledge the compromises that have been already made. I want to thank Chairman Rodriguez for his willingness to consider a much-needed amendment. I want to thank Alderman Riley and Alderman Irvin for putting forth something that we can discuss and chew on. I did not come in here today planning to vote yes, but I do feel that I will be voting yes today because the legislation will take a moment to make some modifications to address the issues raised by many businesses in my community. I'm always looking for a win-win, especially when compromise is necessary. And this should be a win-win for both the employers and the employees. I look forward to the committee discussions. I look forward to. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Alder Gutierrez.
Thank you so much, Chairman. Steem colleagues, I rise in support of the paid leave and paid sick leave ordinance. Today, I stand before you as the Alderwoman of the 14th Ward and the vice chair of the Workforce and Development Committee. But before I had the formal responsibilities of a public servant, I was an immigrant who faced many of the same challenges that our hard-working communities face. One of the first jobs that I had in this country was working at a local restaurant. It was very fast-paced. I was part of the line team and felt like I couldn't miss a day of work. Sadly, those are the jobs immigrants have access to. One morning, I could barely talk, and I had a very bad throat infection. I was in a lot of pain, and I knew I had to go see a doctor because I clearly knew I had a fever. I knew that if I missed work, I could be reprimanded and maybe even fired for not being a team player. I went to work that day, and fortunately, I was able to get through the day without a more severe escalation. But I know that the same story happens to many of the residents that I represent here today. I hope that nobody has to make that horrible decision before going into work. I would also want to share another story. When I was running for this position, I was knocking on doors, and a mama four told me something that I would never forget. When you're elected, please introduce legislation that would help us and vote for what is right and always please advocate for working people. And that is why I passionately support the pay leave ordinance. In a ward where the working class, many of whom are immigrants, form the backbone, this measure is not just policy, it's a lifeline. No one should face impossible choice between health, family time, and wages. This ordinance is our commitment to justice, fairness, and compassion. As an immigrant myself, I've experienced the struggles firsthand. This is our chance to stand united, to invest in the well-being and prosperity of every resident in our beloved city of Chicago. En nuestras comunidades donde la clase trabajadora y muchos de los cuales son inmigrantes constituye la columna vertebral, esta medida no solo es una póliza, es algo sumamente necesario. Nadie debería enfrentarse a la elección imposible entre salud, tiempo familiar, y salario. Esta ordenanza es nuestro compromiso con la justicia, la equidad, y la compasión. Como inmigrante, he experimentado las luchas de primera mano. Esta es nuestra oportunidad de permanecer unidos e invertir en el bienestar y la prosperidad de cada residente de nuestra bella ciudad de Chicago. Muchas gracias.
I have one, one more individual on the floor who wishes to speak. If there are any other Alders that wish to speak to this, thank you. Are there others? All right, two more, more. Chair recognizes Alderman Lopez. You, you want him to go in front of you? No, you're, you were already marked. This was.
Fair enough.
Yep. The chair recognizes Alderman Lopez, and then after Alderman Lopez, Alderman Hoppinworth, and then I have Alderman Moore. If there are others, you could raise your hand now. Otherwise, Alderman Moore. Okay, I got you. And then Mitz. All right, the chair recognizes Alderman Lopez.
Thank you, Mr. President, and good afternoon, members of the city council. This body, in this historic chamber, has done many great things to help workers. When I think back of the discussions we've had, 2019, I believe, is when we passed Fair Work Week. 2021, if I'm not mistaken, is when we pushed for an increase in the minimum wage, as well as paid sick time. And even this year, 2023, one fair wage. Victory's all for working Chicagoans. I wish I could join my colleagues again for another victory, but I have great concerns, Mr. President. I have great concerns when our rationale for moving forward is simply, that's the way it goes. I have 600 licensed businesses in my ward, employing thousands of people locally in the 15th Ward, not to mention the thousands more who go to every one of your wards to work. It is not lost on me, Mr. President, that for all the rhetoric that I keep hearing of Black and Brown, that I actually represent those African-American and Latino communities, those workers that so many of those higher-end businesses and mom-and-pop businesses too rely on. When I think of what goes on in the history, the back of the yards, the businesses that are in the back of the yards, as well as the businesses that are in Brighton Park, Gage Park, Chicago Lawn, West Englewood, Canaryville, all points in between and all points connecting, businesses have been asked to do a lot. And that was all, relatively speaking, before COVID-19, when the pandemic shut down our economy in a way nobody, nobody could plan for. Despite help from the federal government, we never helped our businesses in this city the way we could have. We didn't help the restaurant industry or any of the other service industries where a vast majority of those working today asking for help work. All I have to do is look back in our recovery plan and see every great thing that was discussed but never acted upon. Hundreds of millions of dollars proposed, suggested, but never spent. And yet, those businesses somehow, somehow, in my ward, as in many of the wards here, still somehow managed to survive, still managed to try and keep people employed, still tried to keep the lights on, and pay their employees, often at the expense of their own families. Because, Mr. President, most of those businesses, as my colleagues have said, are in multimillion-dollar conglomerations. They're the corner stores, the tamale place, they're the little family-owned restaurant or taqueria that barely has employees, enough customers to pay for their employees' salary, let alone everything required to keep business moving. They have taken hit after hit, done everything we've asked them to do. And now, having seen paid time off at the state level, barely giving them time to prepare for next year, we are going to add this at the 11th hour. Yes, I've been approached by business, citywide level, I've been approached by labor at the citywide level, but what matters most to me is what's going to impact my residents. And my residents, their businesses, and their futures have all told me that they have tried to keep up, but cannot do it. One of my colleagues said, actually, a few of our colleagues have said today, it's great to put forward all of these pluses for workers, but if you have no business to hire them, there's no job associated with that. One business in particular comes to mind, in the back of the yards, that's already told me that they've already had to decrease hours and lay people off as a result of the state's paid time off. Because the customers that they approach for their services are unwilling to pay for the increase in costs associated with what the state has asked them. They haven't even factored in what the cost of what we are proposing will do, both to their customers who pay and to the employees that they hire. And I think we forget that point often in this chamber, Mr. President. The impact that business has seen over the last few years. The U.S. Chamber of Commerce said in 2022, 50%, half of all small businesses in our city have fallen victim to shoplifting at least once in the, in that year, causing pricing to be adjusted 46% to cover the loss. That is just simply for shoplifting. That doesn't take into account anything labor-related, and it absolutely does not take into account what I've referenced before many times in this room, is the cost of delay, the hidden tax that exists when this building is slow to act on the needs of business. 18 months to get a permit, 18 months to get answers, 18 months to get resolution for a small, family-operated business is unsustainable. Nobody can shoulder the weight of the wait. And now we're asking for even more from them. I would gladly have supported if we'd given more time to work through some of the kinks that we've seen in this ordinance. I can hope that this gets corrected down the road, but I shouldn't have to hope for the future when I have something right in front of me now that could address our concerns. Mr. President, our workers deserve everything we can do to help them, but we have to create a fair and balanced approach to doing that. And that is not what we're seeing. It's not what we're going to expect, and I hate to come back six months from now and tell you that there's been a decrease in businesses because of what we've done. I am not a border ward, but I am a ward where businesses are struggling, where businesses are hurting, where businesses are still trying to employ people because it is both a service and a job creation that's driving our economy in the Southwest Side. And if we do anything that tips that scale in the wrong direction, it will be the workers who pay the price, and it will be us who will be at fault. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Alder Manal Hoppinworth.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm the daughter of Filipino immigrants, nurses, born in the 10th Ward, and I was grateful that they were able to take time off to bring me to Loretta Rose's dance studio in Calumet City. I'm also grateful that, as a physical therapist working at Cook County Hospital, the year when my son was born, I was able to take paid time off as well. I am a business owner, 24 years, in Andersonville, and if you've never been there, it's only about two, three blocks long, but people from all over find it as a destination. They walk there, they take transit, they, they drive, and they do it because it's, it's a very unique part of the city. And I think all of our neighborhoods should feel like that, too. Ours feels like that because of the small businesses that are on that business corridor, because they're unique. And I also think about Asian Argyle, which is in Uptown, which is part of my ward, where folks are struggling right now, their small businesses, because of everything we had already mentioned, the pandemic, but also the reconstruction of the red line is happening there, too. What I want to say is, as a new person, I've never seen legislation like this change so much in such a short period of time. So I want to thank the chair for your work on that, for working with the unions and every single person who has spoken on this issue to this date. I also want to thank Chair Irvin and also Alderman Riley for speaking on behalf of how we are all going to do better if we all do better. And I say this because this is not going to be easy for the small businesses in my ward or elsewhere, but I have confidence because we have the resources here to help. And I know that you are committed to that. We're doing this because we don't want to leave anyone behind, and that includes our small businesses, who also deserve healthy workspaces. Everyone deserves time off, and you shouldn't feel like you have to come to work, even if you're sick, because you think that you're going to lose your job. think that you're going to lose your job. So as I stand in support of this ordinance, I'm thinking of also the Filipino domestic healthcare workers, many of whom work in the tall buildings in Edgewater. And I'm thinking about my mother, also, rest in peace, who worked really hard, but who was there for me, to take me to dance class and also to my performances because of paid time off. And I'm also thinking of my own workers in my small business, who need time off to take care of themselves. They deserve that, too. And once again, I want to thank everyone here for your support. We have to make it right. We have to make it better. This isn't the end. I hope it's the beginning of better times for us in Chicago and a better, a better environment for all of us to work. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Alderman Moore.
Thank you, Mr. President. First, let me start by saying, I was on the front lines when we did $15 minimum wage. I was at the head of the line for paid sick leave and definitely fighting for one fair But Bring Home Chicago got me to a point where I went out and I even listened more than I even normally do. And I got people's voices who were not normally heard when I was leaning toward no that converted me to a yes, because I heard them. I listened and I heard them. Let me start by saying, I totally concur with a lot of things that Chairman Dow said, especially when she said, when she was at the churches and they mentioned paid time off and people got excited. Well, I did that to a couple of my businesses, small businesses, and they got excited. They said, yeah, they deserve it. But then I went into the details. They said, oh, wait. Bet you didn't go to the details with the churches. They said, oh, wait, that's going to kill me, David. I said, wait, haven't you all been at the table? And let me go back, because after I was set to pass paid sick leave, I, I was, it was so much going on, I was tired. I went to go walk along the riverfront downtown, Riverwalk. And those restaurants, and I just started talking to different waitresses as I sat down and ate and went to some other restaurants. And I said, how do you feel about the one fair wage? A tip? They say, huh? What are you talking about? I said, they said, we don't care, we don't care. I'm like, wait, you don't know what's going on? We don't care. Then I went to my neighborhood and asked some of them, we don't care. And I'm like, wait, what was the concern at? I voted for it, still, because I, I, I believed in it, I stood with it. But what I had to do is go and listen to those small businesses in my ward and, and listen to them tell me, David, this is going to be tough for me. But what has even bothered me even more is that they didn't have a clear seat at the table for us to come to a compromise until very late. See, everybody think, and when we talk about this stuff, they think it was just about the wealthy or the major restaurants. Let me tell you, the downtown restaurants may catch cold when this happened, but those communities in Englewood and Auburn Gresham, the few that we have, are going to catch the flu and die. And so, because number one, their voices were not heard. You had, as Alderman Dow said, daycare work, daycare operators, everybody have concerns about this. And the fact that we still trying to put substitutes and saying, we'll talk about that later. I wish a woman would tell a guy, you can get me a ring later and marry me now. That's what that sounds like. That's what that sounds like. When I said, hey, let's throw out the right to, right to action. Let's, let's, let's put in there, giving them six months to a year. No, we can't do it. And everybody talk about, well, we were at 15 days and we compromised every, I said again, like I said last time, everybody started out high. That's negotiations, that's what you do. But nobody's, and, and when you get to this thing, I got to hear people on both sides saying, I still don't want this. Man, y'all didn't do that. I'm not hearing that. I won't sleep at night if I vote yes, because of those small businesses in Englewood and in Auburn Gresham, whose voices were not clearly at the table on this. And so I'm always going to stand for working people, but I also want people to work. And if Mr. Brewer, who hires two people, says, David, I may be out of business, I got to listen to that. Because guess what? Nobody's going to be down here screaming, trying to get those two people that's out of work back to work. And so I have to stand up for them, even when we talk about McDonald's, in essence. Everybody thinks McDonald's is just corporate McDonald's. A lot of our black McDonald operators, they operate as small businesses, each, in each separate restaurant that they own. They give out scholarships to our children, they do so much and giving back to the community. They feel their voices wasn't heard. So it's not about you just voting yes or no, it's about making sure everybody's voices are heard equitably. And that did not happen. So I have to stand up for them, as I stand up for the working people, so I can make sure that they continue to have a place to work. And until Englewood and Auburn Gresham is looking like downtown, because that's my thing, build, 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 build. Then I can get on board and when my, when my business is saying, hey, we're doing well, so we can just catch a cold and we won't catch a flu. So as it, right now, I cannot support this, I wish we could have made those changes, and it's clear, everybody trying to make a change. All you had to do was do it, and that's what would have been fair. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Those are all the council members that have expressed to speak. There are a few more of our alders have requested to participate in today's meeting remotely for reasons stated in Rule 51, 59, apologies. And those alders are Knutson, Fuentes, Mits, Burnett, and Cruz. Can I get a motion? All right, so there's a motion that's been moved for the alders Knutson, Fuentes, Mits, Burnett, and Cruz to participate remotely. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. All those opposed, say no. In the opinion of the chair, the ayes have it. Alder Rodriguez.
Thank you so much for the conversation. Looking forward to the work ahead of us. Mr. President, I call, I call the question.
Thank you very much. There's a, there's a motion for the passage of the item by a roll call vote. Members, please use your e-vote application to record your vote at this time.
Okay, I will now call on those who have not yet cast their vote. Alderman Hopkins?
No.
Alderman Hopkins is a no. Alderwoman Coleman? Alderman Curtis?
Yes.
Alderman Curtis is a yes. Alderwoman Taylor?
Yes.
Alderwoman Taylor is a yes. Alderwoman Tabarez?
No.
Alderwoman Tabarez is a no. Alderwoman Scott? Oh, you're on there, I'm sorry. Alderperson Fuentes?
Yes.
Alderperson Fuentes is a yes. Alderman Burnett?
Yes.
Alderman Burnett is a yes. Alderman Talia Pharo?
Yes.
Alderman Talia Pharo is a yes. Alderperson Rodriguez Sanchez?
Yes.
Alderperson Rodriguez Sanchez is a yes. Alderwoman Mits?
Yes.
Alderwoman Mits is a yes. Alderman Napolitano?
No.
Alderman Napolitano is a no. Alderman Knutson?
Yes.
Alderman Knutson is a yes. Alderman Lawson?
No.
Alderman Lawson is a no. Alderman Gardner? Alderwoman Coleman?
Yes.
Alderwoman Coleman is a yes. Voting is now closed.
There are 36 yes, yays, and 12 nays. This matter has passed. Alderwoman Harris, on a motion to reconsider?
I move to reconsider the vote.
All those in favor of the motion to reconsider, signify by saying aye. All those opposed, say no.
No.
This motion fails. Alderman Mitchell, are you aware of any other further unfinished business?
Mr. President, I am aware of one item of unfinished business. No, no. It's been, it's been a minute.
I am not aware of any further.
Are you sure?
We have miscellaneous business.
It is, I'm not aware.
Unfinished business?
I'm not aware of any more unfinished.
Thank you. There's no more further business on miscellaneous business. The chair recognizes Alderman Mitchell.
Except for the ordinance set in the date and time of the next meeting, I am not aware of any miscellaneous business.
Very good. For the date and time for the next meeting, Alderman Mitchell.
I've handed up an ordinance to the clerk setting the date and time of the next meeting.
Thank you very much, clerk. Could you please read the ordinance?
Be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Chicago, the next regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Chicago shall be held on Wednesday, November 15, 2023, beginning at 10:00 a.m. in the council chamber on the second floor in City Hall, 121 North LaSalle Street, Chicago, Illinois. This ordinance shall take effect and be enforced from and after its passage. Signed, Gregory Mitchell, Alderman, 7th Ward.
Alderman Mitchell.
Who passes in the omnibus?
Hearing no objections, so ordered. Chair recognizes Alderman Lopez.
Thank you, Mr. President. Before we adjourn...
Just hold on just a second, you all. The meeting's not adjourned. Please, we're almost there. Alderman Lopez.
Thank you, Mr. President. Before we adjourn, I want to take a moment to recognize in silence the life of Sharon Monson, the sergeant-at-arms officer who passed away on the third floor unexpectedly.
Thank you, Alderman Lopez, for a moment of silence. Alderwoman Harris has expressed that we've already done it, but if we just could, just for a moment, a moment of silence. Thank you. For the omnibus, Alderman Mitchell.
Matters in the omnibus be passed by the, by a voice vote.
All those in favor of passing the omnibus, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. In the opinion of the chair, the ayes have it. Matters of the omnibus has passed. Alderman Mitchell, on a motion to adjourn.
There being no further business before this body, I move that we adjourn.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. The meeting is adjourned.